Let's go ahead and get started. Tom, welcome. Thank you so much for coming to The Republic and joining us for our cycle of candidate interviews for this cycle. We're just hitting on five questions here and just feel free to elaborate as much as you like.
Okay.
So, a large focus of BCSE and school districts across the state is on the foundational reading skills of second and third graders. How do you think BCSE is doing in helping those students along? And how might you contribute to help ensure that those students have their best shot at passing IRE three?
Yeah, so that's been the biggest transition for this year specifically. They had a test last year to kind of get a baseline and see where we are growth-wise in the state. And it seemed overwhelmingly and surprisingly better than expected based off of what we saw in past years, especially rebounding from COVID era issues. One of the biggest things that I've said from the get-go is education and everything starts with home, starts at home. And I sat there and watched last year a parent talk with one of the kindergarten teachers because their child was struggling with teaching. And after kind of talking with the teacher and everything, well, you're also not working with your child at home. So, there is a parent-teacher partnership here that goes along with education that needs to be reestablished. Now, as far as a school board member, how do you do that? That's very difficult and it may be really idealistic and almost an impossible idea because as a school member, how do you encourage parents to be better parents? I guess set the example would be my best thing. But, and it's not just reading, it's all pieces of education, whether it's math or One thing that I've seen, my kids are both fifth and sixth grade, and Chromebooks are a big issue with that. And a lot of people argue against the use of technology and how it may or may not hold kids back if we don't expose them to technology because we're improving technologically at an exponential rate. And it's, well, we don't want to leave them behind, but I mean, I think you're a little younger than I am, but we aren't really struggling. Granted, we grew up with it, but there's a lot of programs that are going back to paper and pencil. And that, I think, can help improve your reading and writing skills because I look at my kids' handwriting, it's, holy cow, this is atrocious. And I remember when I was in school, even just homework, spelling tests and spelling homework or vocabulary, we had to write each word five to 10 times. And it was also encouraging too because when I was there, we had a test on Wednesday as a practice, kind of see where we are baseline. And if you got 100% on that, you didn't have to take the final test on Friday. So, you got a little free time to yourself. Not saying removing Chromebooks 100%, but we need to start limiting the use of Chromebooks in schools, especially at the elementary level, to give us a good baseline. And one thing I've learned through this campaign is a lot of our AC programs, the higher accelerated programs, are pulling themselves away from using the Chromebooks and going back to baseline. So, if it's good enough for the kids that are achieving greatness or testing better, why are we not trying to work with the kids that are struggling? Because a lot of times this technology can be a big distractor, so.
Gotcha. Obviously, another big element of kind of the discourse surrounding BCSE right now is Envision 2030, their $306 million facilities plan. What are your thoughts on Envision 2030?
So, I have a lot of negative thoughts as far as the project goes. I think the design that we're going with is not appropriate. I think that it's increasing safety issues and increasing distractions. I've talked with a lot of teachers, I've been through Parkside. That was one of the main reasons I decided to run was I walked through Parkside back in May and saw what we're doing. And just the equipment that we're buying, it's not built to last. It's almost like walking into an IKEA and getting the cheapest of the cheap stuff that's going to break. The desks they have have pull-out plastic drawers that are already breaking. And so, we're already have to figure out ways to replace that. And it's going to, long-term expenditures that we just aren't really planning for there. As far as Parkside goes, they spent the last two years without a gym because they broke it into, they quartered it, excuse me, and had four classrooms in there to kind of reduce the burden on costs. As I spoke with Superintendent Films about this as well, because I asked, why, we're planning on doing renovations on all of our schools, why would we not get modular classrooms for these children? And he said, well, it's a matter of infrastructure and added costs when, in all reality, we're not doing multiple schools at one time, as of right now. The other piece was limited space, which, limited space-wise, we're talking Schmidt and Lincoln are the two that have the limited space that you can work with. And even Schmidt has a giant grass field behind it. Yeah, kids are going to have to go in and out of the school, but when you're talking about maintaining a gym class, that is very important, at least to me, as a coach at Central and then also as a fitness trainer in the military, like, these kids need to exert themselves, they need to have that release basically in exposure to physical activity. Now, when I asked, what do the kids do for gym class? Nice days, they go outside, which is awesome, cool, fresh air, they're open to sunlight, vitamin D, everything like that is great. However, inclement weather. I mean, we just spent the last four days dealing with torrential downpours from Hurricane Helene. So, now the kids are going to go outside and maybe end up getting wet shoes and everything and have to deal with wet feet all day, or at least you can go out and play the playground a little bit. The other piece to that is when you look at four classrooms in one gym class, or one gym, the walls that they put up were roughly 10 to 15-foot barriers, so sound and everything still transferred over. And it was a massive distraction when you have four classrooms in one room. And on top of that, you're dealing with climate control issues as well. Two years ago, my wife called me and said, hey, I need every fan that you can find. And so, drove through my house, I found four fans, took them to the gym, and it had to be 85 degrees in that gym. And so, climate control in a gym is not, it's not easy. And now you expect your kids to learn, your students to learn, when they're dealing with excessive heat, like, they're going to be struggling, not going to be paying attention, they're antsy, they're sweaty, they're hot, they're, oh, it's awful, falling asleep for that matter. And so, what I do know about Schmidt, because they're the next one on the list, so they have basically made it into two quarters and a half. So, they have, half the gym is gym class, the other one quarter is music class, one quarter is art class. Last I've heard, they're still struggling to get art supplies for the art classes. And you're also trying to sit here and teach your classes, whether it be music, art, or anything, and you have gym class going on screaming and yelling and everything, or music blasting over the wall for art class, and they're struggling. They can't concentrate, excuse me, and they're just, some of the decisions that we made as a whole for this 2030 project is just, it's not functional and it's not acceptable. It's just, in all reality, it's not feasible. So, when I walked into Parkside the first time, the first thing I noticed were the new glass windows that they had knocked out concrete walls to kind of replicate what your door is. And so, my first thought was, as a military guy, risk management, threat management, threat assessments, it's like, man, and like, one of the biggest issues that we face or our fears are school shootings. So, what do we do? And there's, pull the blinds and hide is all you can do, but even the blinds don't black out the room. And so, these are the things that we're making decisions on and wasting money on. And some of the classrooms, most of the classrooms at Parkside specifically have what I call an e-gress room, but it's where their cubbies are because they, if you've ever been in the Parkside, they had, they used to be all in the middle where you had coat hangers and everything like that. Well, they reduced the size, the functional size or physical size of the classrooms, which is another issue for me. I'll talk about that in a minute. But, and they put the cubbies in between two classrooms. And those are probably about the size of this room. Also in those rooms, they blew out all the big massive bathrooms, so each classroom has its own bathroom now, or they share two. And so, those are supposed to be your hiding rooms and e-gress rooms under threat. But we also, in turn, decreased the size of a classroom for already overcrowded classrooms. So, now you're just strangling these teachers and these kids by reducing their space. And then bathrooms, I look at it, I break it down all the way down to, as a custodian, so these custodians now have to clean roughly 24 bathrooms approximately instead of cleaning, say, six bathrooms maybe, that you have room to operate and maneuver. And then just what they did with the cafeteria, so the cafeteria still leaks, that was one of the main concerns with the infrastructure and architecture that they have right now. And so, they addressed that, that was the first thing they addressed, well, it still leaks. They took out all the tables that had, that would all fold up and had the attached benches or seats, and then they replaced it with tables and chairs. Now, a pre-K kindergarten, first grader, even all the way up to sixth grade, they're not going to push their chairs in, they're not going to sit properly. And so, you have the staff sitting there maneuvering in and out of this chaos, trying to maintain the school. And so, like, if I were a custodian in that, I would just, I'd probably end up quitting because it's all these added man-hours because now they have to put these chairs on top instead of just being able to fold a simple table and move it out of the way. And so, that goes to that functionality test that we are failing. And I do, I saw it on Columbus Man the other day where they're talking about one of the things that BCSE should invest in as far as student safety or school safety, and it's a little piece of metal that jams behind the door and you can't, it's nearly impossible to break through. That'd be a good idea, except we have a giant glass window here and the door is glass as well. And it's not, none of them are bulletproof, none of them are safety. So, it, these are things that I've looked at and I understand Envision 2030 is important. I do understand that we need to renovate our schools and get them back to standard because they are old, that's fine. But let's do it fiscally responsibly, let's do it functionally responsibly. And that's one thing that I've actually had a conversation with certain teachers regarding the proposed new elementary school out west of town was, it's going to be $65 million at a baseline. And that's including the architecture fee that Cummins is covering, which is $5 million. So, $60 million to taxpayers and funding and grants. So, when we look at that, one of the first things that I was told, that the principal who's been tagged with that responsibility of that school, which is kind of crazy, they've already picked somebody, but the first thing he said was, it needs to be functional. Because I understand that Columbus, yeah, we're different by design, we're about architecture and looking fancy and everything. But like I said, when I was interviewed with the CEA and just like someone, a parent that spoke out last Monday at the school board meeting, we can build all this stuff that looks nice and outside, but when we're failing on the inside and we're applying money where it doesn't really need to go, my basic thing that I've said since day one is aesthetics don't breed education, they don't develop education. And just because something looks nice doesn't mean that it's going to really make us better.
Gotcha. Let's move on here. Do you think teachers are being compensated adequately? And then what can BCSE do to improve teacher retention?
That's a great question. So, I've actually talked a lot about this myself and I've talked to a lot of teachers about this too. In terms of teacher retention, there's a discipline issue across BCSE and really across society as a whole, and it's not just BCSE. But that also goes back to our first question that you discussed with the reading is, we need parent engagement and parents teaching proper behavioral skills. I spoke with a behavior, one of the behavioral health providers a few weeks ago that works with BCSE, and she had told me that roughly kindergarten to third grade, it starts to decrease as you get older, but most of your issues are kindergarten, first grade and some of the second grade. And yeah, you're still going to have some rowdy kids as they get older, some of them just won't learn, but a lot of the behavior things is they don't know how to act in that environment. And so, it starts at home. And Sam Eisen's been very vocal about this as well. Discipline starts at home, respect starts at home. And so, in terms of adequate compensation to teachers, so, one of the big talking points right now between the three that are backed by CEA, to include CEA is a possible referendum extension. And so, one thing that isn't discussed in that is the fact that BCSE since 2018, and this is actually on tape from Monday's school board meeting where Dr. Phillips actually admitted that since 2018, they've been moving money from the education fund to the operations fund. The education fund is the fund that we get our teacher pay from the state. And so, they've been transferring money since, for six years now, to include this year, I think it's between eight and nine million that we are transferring over to operations fund. The referendum piece, when they brought that up in 2020, they sold that purely as helping teachers pay. Teacher pay is roughly three to four million a year that would, of that incurred cost. So, even if we decreased how much we were transferring over to the operations fund, we still have leftover $5 million that we have to play with. The baseline teacher pay is roughly $61,000. And I think the high scale, off the top of my head, is roughly 81,000 or 82,000. And then, once you throw the referendum bonuses in there, so, you don't qualify for referendum bonus until you have five years' experience. And that's something I had to explain to a teacher who I've spoken with and, because she was in support of me, but she's a union teacher. And so, the CEA, the teachers' union, had sent out a text message and now they've resorted to phone calls of regurgitating the same thing over and over and over. You don't vote for the other three, you're going to, you could lose up to $15,000. They worded it very, very clear to not be held liable for what they're saying. Well, you have a teacher who's part of your union, who's only got three years' experience, four years' experience, and so, you're lying to that individual because that individual immediately thought, I could lose $15,000? So, she thinks that she's going from $60,000 to $45,000. She doesn't understand that she doesn't even qualify for referendum bonus. And so, this is where leadership and positions need to be very clear and transparent about what's going on. And so, I've explained this to multiple people now, to include, if you go to my campaign page, I lay it out of what's going on with teacher pay and referendums. As far as where we are in compensation, I do think that $80,000 is very competitive here, especially given the places that we are. Now, do I think that we need another referendum? No. Do I think that we can maintain the current status that we're at with referendum bonuses to equate the pay scales? I think we can maintain that, and we just need to stop wasting money and transferring from education fund to operations fund. And like you said, we're spending $300 million on the Envision 2030 project. That's all operational costs over time. And so, with that, what we're not talking about is the estimated $200 million in interest that's going to be incurred by 2030 project on top of that $300 million bond. Now, as far as teacher retention goes, like I said, there's a discipline issue that's going on in the schools. And right now, a lot of the teachers don't feel like those people who should be making disciplinary action decisions are not holding up their end of the bargain. There's a lot of issues where teachers are coming forward, they're speaking out, they're saying, hey, punish this child or give this child consequences because of their actions because they're not learning from them. And then you have people in those roles that should be doing the disciplinary action, giving them a light little smack on the back of the hand. And those are some of the more undisciplined kids. And then you have the kids that are disciplined, that do something stupid, say something wrong, use a bad word or anything, and then they get hammered. So, there's a double standard there as well. And, but, I mean, the biggest thing is teachers are leaving in droves and it's not about money necessarily. One other conversation I had over the summer with a teacher was, what can I, what's the biggest thing that you would like to have? And this teacher said, I need help. I need a TA. And what hasn't really been discussed was, so last year, we lost a grant, a federal grant funding for TAs across the US as a whole, if I remember right, but in particularly BCSE. And so, we lost TAs in the corporation. And so, when I sat down with Dr. Phillips, I asked her, are we going to find a way to bring TAs to the classroom? His statement to me was, no, there's no room in the budget. And on top of that, there is no empirical data to show that TAs in the classroom help with academics. That to me, either he is completely disconnected or he's just not listening to his teachers and his staff. And that one, that one, so my wife is a TA at Parkside, and so, when I told her that, she about blew her lid and along with all the other TAs that I know, and just sitting there is like, we work very hard, we are very dedicated, and all the teachers that they support probably could not do anything that they are able to do or would struggle to do what they're able to do without the help of TAs. But I even asked that teacher, I said, if I can't get you a TA, what about more money? And she said, I don't want more money, I want more hands, I want more eyes, I need help, even if it's just a TA for a team. Because this is a middle school teacher. And so, one person for, I think a team is, I think there's five classes. I mean, one TA spread across five classrooms is all that they are asking for. And the average TA makes roughly $13,000 to $20,000. And we can't find room in our budget to support our teachers like that. So, and I've known teachers who have left this area, I know teachers that are teaching in surrounding areas, and they're laughing at BCSE for the decisions that we are making. And they are, like, couldn't be happier till leave, and that's very disgraceful.
All right, just a couple more here. So, obviously, the board has devoted a lot of time in school board meetings over the past 10 months to the accessibility of certain library materials. Do you think BCSE has the correct policy in place for addressing these concerns? And would you like to see anything additional be done?
Yeah, so, I was actually just talking about this over the last week because last week was apparently named by the American Library Association, last week was National Ban Book Week. So, I actually shared my feelings and everything that I talked with the teachers' union about. And one of the things that they asked me in particular was, it was a very open-ended question, is if someone brought a book to you as a challenge, would you ban it? That's how they asked it, and I kind of laughed at it because it's, what kind of book are we talking about? What are we, like, there's no substance there, how can I even address that? Because it was kind of a silly question. Now, if we look at the books that have been challenged in the past, whether it be Push, which I read, and I can actually say that I enjoyed the story, do I feel like it's suitable for a school-aged child or a school-aged student? Not particularly. And there's this, there's this idea wrapped around that if you've suffered trauma and you read about trauma, it's going to bring you out of your shell. And in reality, that's not true. You're going to regress, you're going to shut down, and if nobody's paying attention to you and watching how you are interacting, seeing that you are now withdrawn, they're not going to be able to push you into talking through this issue. And so, with that, I do believe that our librarians are doing their best. Yes, there are books that are slipping through, like Push, and one of the questions, one of the other books that was challenged was People Kill People. Both these books have very explicit rape scenes and very explicit language. Mark Neimiller kind of pointed out that if I can't walk around the school saying bad language or walk around with a shirt saying F this, F that, or C-word, something inappropriate, then why are we allowing this type of language in a book? I think literature is very important. I think that reading is very important, which kind of goes back to things that I've discussed is I don't think that we should be removing content from libraries. I honestly think that these challenges to these books are actually bringing more attention to them than already getting. Push was only, Push has been in the library for 15 or 16 years roughly and maybe checked out once a year if that. People Kill People has only been checked out maybe twice, and it's been in since 2015, 2016 roughly. And so, these challenges, I think, are bringing more attention to these books. And now, you're going to have kids that are sitting there, well, what's in this book? I do think that parents need to be, again, engaged with their child. I've had, I've had talks with BCSE personnel, and even Dr. Phillips brought up during the meeting, what was it, three weeks ago, where the, where Push was discussed, that there is a policy, there is a plan and action that if parents don't feel that there's something in the library that their child should be exposed to, then they can, they can challenge that or say, my child, please do not allow them to check that out. And from what I've understood, my mom is a former library assistant at East, so I've actually leaned on her a lot. And I've also talked to historical librarians, and so, I've done a lot of analysis on this. So, there is a, there is a plan of action that is there, and I do think that is acceptable. Now, would I like to see a book like Push or People Kill People have parental consent? Absolutely. And so, that could be something added by the school board. Because until people and parents understand what Destiny, which is the program that we use for our libraries, until they understand what is in our libraries, because there's an issue there, people don't know what's there. And so, until they, until they know what their children have access to, to actually have a discussion and lead their children through these horrific scenes where it talks about pulling the diaper off of a child and having their way with them, or discussing a man raping another 16-year-old boy, 15-year-old boy, like, these are some of the things that kids are going to sit here and it's like, whoa, what is going on? And they need guidance through that. And that's where I talk, where parents need to be engaged with their kids. And some people may call that segregating a book, but in all reality, like, what's the difference of not allowing Playboy, Playgirl and other explicit material in a school library? I do think that, I've, I've said this since day one too, is in terms of what is in our libraries, I think that there should be a process to challenge. There is. Now, I think that the process may be a little bit skewed because under state law, if there's any sort of reference to educational, what's the word I'm looking for? If there's any sort of educational benefit. Value, thank you. Benefit and value. Those are the words I was looking for. Then it, then it has a place in a library. Reading through Push, I can kind of see where there's some educational value to it. But I find it to be a little overly explicit and unnecessarily explicit. I thought it was kind of interesting that when it was discussed at the school board meeting, some of the people who were advocating for the book to remain had no idea that it was a fictional book. People were surprised in the audience. And so it's kind of interesting to see people advocating for something that they themselves haven't even read. And Jason Major actually took a giant leap of faith by reading that final excerpt discussing the diaper situation at the school board meeting. Now, he did change a lot of the language, but just to see how people reacted, to include adults, adult males reacting to the language that's used and, and just the depiction that's in there is, one of, we always talk about our imagination is one of the most powerful things. And what does a book do? It gives you words, and you yourself are going through the process of imagining what the book is telling you. Your brain is the one detailing all this stuff. And so that's why I think that parents need to be engaged. Parents need to know what their children are reading and are exposed to, because they need to be able to talk through that. Now, to that, I've been told that you're talking about perfect child syndrome, where my child's going to open up to me, and teenage kids aren't, are, are going to actually have that conversation. And I mean, that, that is a valid counterargument to that. But as a parent, you have to, you have to try. You have to try to be engaged, and you have to try to lead your child to become an adult. And some of the, the content where people on the other side of the aisle are saying, we need to remove this book, we need to ban this book, which banning a book is not even a right term because just because you pull it out of a library, doesn't mean that, that, that you can't find it in the public library, you can't find it on Amazon or anything like that. So it's not really banned. So the people that are advocating against those books, they have a right to, to be upset that there's a lot of explicit language and everything. But my talk with them is, and it's been talked about is, even though the story is fictional, there's a lot of truth to it, because these things do happen. And until we actually do talk about them and bring them to light, do we actually try to advocate for those people who are suffering? And, and it builds a little empathy, I think, over time. So, I mean, bottom line is, knowledge is power. And unless we're discussing something that may be uncomfortable, sometimes, as I tell my kids, you need to become comfortable being uncomfortable. And sometimes that means putting yourself in a position that you don't necessarily want to be in or talk about a topic or read about a topic that you don't want to know about. So.
All right, last one. In recent years, school board races and the school board meetings themselves have become increasingly charged at times. How would you work with others that may not agree with you on a specific subject?
So I guess, in, in what terms are you just talking about, like, charged? I mean, I understand that there's a lot of topics.
Police officers at school board meetings, people raising their voices, interrupting the proceedings of the school board, things of that nature.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that goes back to this basics ability. I mean, we have to become comfortable with being uncomfortable. So people who disagree, guess what? That's your human basic right to disagree with me, and it's also my basic human right to disagree with you. And we have to understand that not everybody's going to be on the same terms. Now, to escalate that to being overly vocal, disruptive, and threatening, or where we think that there's going to be an issue, where we have to have increased police presence, like, we need to calm down. And that's something that I've seen running for this position is, it's been nasty, and it's been nasty since day one. There's been a lot of hate spewed from both sides, and it's not even the candidates themselves, really. It's, it's individuals who are supporting other candidates. And one of the biggest issues I see is social media as a whole. Everybody with a keyboard can say whatever they want, even if they don't even feel it or mean it. I've had multiple conversations with people that I already know are in favor of my opposition, that are 100% against me, even though they don't even know me. They don't even know what I stand for. And I hadn't even, like, really put myself out there. And so it's kind of interesting. Luckily, that's kind of cooled down a little bit, at least against me. I know Sam Eisen's gotten a lot of playtime on, on Columbus Man and on her page as well from haters. And I know that Whitney Lloyd has as well. People have really left alone Nikki and, and Lee and then myself. I'm not really out there, and David Tiley's not necessarily been attacked. I do know though, again, in terms of on my page, I know that, again, there's people that are asking me questions that really have no real interest in what I have to say, and they're only there to be disruptors. But from what I know, I am the only one that's not pushed people away. I stand up to it. I face the, the opposition. I face the challenges. And we need to have a conversation about it. And if you don't agree with me, let's find a common ground here. And that way, I understand where you're coming from. You understand where I'm coming from. And you have to be open to other people's ideas. Because if you're not, then what, why are we talking? We're just wasting oxygen at this point, or, or wasting keyboard time. Because like, a lot of these conversations and, or, or conversations on Facebook, just circular logic. And everybody's only concerned with really sharing what they want to share and, and only want to make their point, to make their point without listening to you. And so even in some of my heated arguments, I've actually still refrained from blocking people. Even the tough questions. I do know that there was one individual who asked all six candidates the exact same question regarding Envision 2030. And four of us answered him, two of them, two others blocked him and ignored him. And to me, that was very telling, that you're really not open to a challenging question. And why would you not want to expose yourself and expose your thoughts on, on an issue? Especially as you're going to be someone who may be making policy decisions. So what are you hiding, basically? But in terms of keeping order, so one thing that I do in the military is I sit on a lot of staff boards and, and decision boards, planning boards, that get a little heated at times. Especially when people disagree with topics or, or planning decisions. And it's a matter of, we got to keep a cool head. We need to have open discussion. And it's a matter of just taking control of the room and understanding that there are certain civil responsibilities that we have, especially as adults, to act civilly, to sound redundant. But I mean, that's the thing is, if you're going to, if you're going to act like a child, I'll treat you like a child. And you can go have a nice exit. I'll see you next later, next Tuesday, and, or whenever. And we'll, we can have an open discussion off the topic. But if they're, we're there for business, we're there for business. If you have an opinion, I'll listen to your opinion, and we can have a discussion about it. But be civil. I said a lot there to get back to the all main point, but I mean, that's the thing is, we've, we've lost our sense of our moral compass, really, and we've lost our sense of civility. And more importantly, I, I said this multiple times in the interview with the teachers' union, is we've lost our sense of community, and it's really sad. So.
All righty. That's all I had. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate it.